I call this regular scheduled Craven County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. I want to welcome each and every one of you to the meeting this morning. We have a long meeting and a closed session meeting. If I do forget, I want to remind everyone to silence their cellphones or turn them off on vibrate. Anyone here for the closed session meeting? A reminder, there is a possibility after the closed session, we will come back out for action. So, if I don't remind everybody at the end, I'll give you a heads up now that we will be coming out of closed session with action. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner McKay.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Here.
Chairman Liner.
Here. If you please stand for the pledge or remain standing for prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Gracious God, we give you thanks for giving us another day. During these coming days of county business, we ask your special blessing upon this board of commissioners. The welfare of our citizens stands in the balance of the deliberations of this board, and we beseech you for your guidance to reach decisions which are pleasing to you. May each commissioner be filled with a surfeit of wisdom, patience, and equanimity, that these deliberations might issue forth in solutions that benefit the citizens of Craven County. May all that is done be for your greater honor and glory. Amen.
For all those in attendance, I want to welcome back our attorney, Mr. Grady.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for being back here.
Thank you.
Your assistant has been fabulous. She's welcome anytime.
You got it backwards. I'm actually her assistant.
We always thought that. We always thought that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We got the sheriff and his crew in here. Sheriff, thank you for being here this morning. We have a lot moving on, so let's get started. Take a motion to approve the agenda.
Some move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Public hearing, convention center financing agreement.
We have no one that has signed up to talk.
That's going to go ahead.
Okay. Good morning, commissioners. The first item of business on the agenda this morning is to hold a public hearing to receive public comments on entering into the installment financing agreement for the convention center. The purpose of this agreement is to provide the funds to finance the cost of the improvements as planned under the convention center recovery project. The amount to be financed shall not exceed $10 million, and the convention center building itself will serve as security for the financing agreement. At this time, I would like to request that the board go into public hearing.
Have a motion going close. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll offer up the floor, no one has signed in. Anybody have any comments or anything on the finance agreement for the convention center?
Make a motion to go out of public hearing.
Motion, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, consent agenda, minutes of August 5th, tax releases and refunds, national recovery month proclamation, prostate cancer awareness month proclamation, and the mum fest 2019 proclamation. Receive a motion?
No.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Liner.
Yes. Okay, moving on. Departmental matters, tax, Cindy Glover, tax collection manager.
Good morning.
Morning.
It's that time each year when we present the settlement. Before you have a copy of it, the net levy for the 2018 year was $48,577,404.96. From that, we collected $48,207,766.40 with an uncollected balance of $369,638.56. For a percentage for the 2018, 99.24 percent.
Board have requests? I have one.
Okay.
You're off a little bit from last year's collection. But you know what? You did a fabulous job. You really did.
Thank you.
I mean, for what we went through, for what this county has gone through, to have this amount of collection on our taxes is phenomenal.
Thank you, sir.
So, your staff and your leadership has made this possible, and we're very proud of what you're doing over there.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Go ahead.
And now, we ask that you adopt the discussion.
Order of collection?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Receive a motion?
Some move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Liner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Health Department, Scott Harrelson, Health Director, Animal Shelter, Animal Control Ordinance Amendment, second vote.
Good morning.
Scott, good morning, sir.
Yes, revisiting that vote that we addressed at the last meeting for the second vote.
Receive a motion?
Some move.
Any discussion? Manager, do you have any comments?
No, sir. I was just going to reference it. Remember, the changes in this ordinance are simply changing it from the Health Department to the Sheriff's Office. That's no substantive changes other than that.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner McKay.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Liner.
Yes. Manager, for one minute, just so the public is aware while we had to do a second one, could you?
Yes, sir. Because at your first reading, it was not a unanimous vote because one member of the board was absent at the time. So, it has come for a second vote.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. And thank you, Sheriff. (laughter) I know you have me.
You ask, you shall receive.
The next agenda item is also in regard to animal control. It's actually an adjustment in the hours over animal control, and I have with me this morning our animal control manager, Mrs. Eileen Beeson, who I am eternally grateful to have on staff. She has come to us with a request. Currently, we are open to the public 37 hours a week, and when we did a survey some time ago, we found that probably about 26 to 28 hours a week is the norm in comparable shelters in our area of the state. Well, across the state, what's required is 16 hours a week by statute. What we're proposing is basically to close to the public on Monday. The staff will be there. All of these days, the staff are there. Some staff are there every day of the week. So, this would involve closing to the public on Mondays to allow us to do the sanitation and deep cleaning, sanitizing of the facility, which is also required by statute, also do some staff training, typing the animals for adoption, a lot of things that we can do if we were also tasked with running the front desk. And what we have noticed over time is that I believe Eileen will concur that Monday is one of our slower days to the public. And in addition to this, we would also like to do a trial program the first Tuesday of each month, open until 7 o'clock for adoptions for the public. So, that's really not counted in the 32 and a half hours we're mentioning here. That would be in addition too. So, that would really bring the hours up a bit from 5:30 till 7 o'clock, so another hour and a half a week. And after a six-month timeframe, we would assess if people were taking advantage of that, you know, coming in and in the evening hours, and if so, make that, if it was a popular item, then continue that on. And at this time, I would like to entertain any questions you may have, try to answer them. I know Eileen here as well.
Scott.
Yes, sir.
Good morning. One of the concerns that some of the public have is by closing on Monday, well, let me back up. Our goal is to reduce the amount of euthanasia and increase adoptions. I think everybody would buy into that.
Yes, sir.
And we need to give our new director time to get that underway, and I know she's working in that direction. One of the concerns, however, is by closing on Monday, are we going to eliminate the opportunity to adopt animals? And again, what you just said was Monday is one of our slower days. I want to make sure everybody understands that we will still be able to take in animals on Monday if someone wants to bring an animal. Am I correct on that?
So, right now, it's actually slow for everything. So, we have a little bit of intake, we have a little bit of, but we're actually closed a half a day already on Wednesday. In this proposal, we're going to open back up on Wednesdays. So, this will mean that it's less confusing. We have people that show up at like, you know, 8:30 or 9 o'clock in the morning on Wednesday, and they don't understand that the schedule is changing every day. So, it's going to even add a little bit more. While we will take emergency intake as well as rescue, if a rescue comes in and they're going to pull a bunch of animals, it's very hard to do that during public time. We could actually have 30 animals going out at one time. So, if we can schedule that for a Monday when we're all there, but we can arrange for those animals to go out, it would be a lot easier because we won't be interrupting with our time with the public. So, I think it's, there's a lot of things that can be done that day. We can be marketing the animals more, you know, we will have the time to do all that. And if somebody does come in in an emergency situation, we would take them, of course.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Remind me, if you will, Scott or staff, I mean, several months ago, we cut the hours back. We've already done that, and I could not remember how many hours we had cut it previously. Do you remember?
Yes, sir. You adjusted Wednesday from 10:30 to 1:00.
I'm here.
But I think everything else remained the same, sir.
You know, I'm going to repeat what Commissioner Booker just said, you know, the vice chairman, when he served as chairman, had appointed an advisory committee that myself and former Commissioner Tyson co-chaired. And out of that advisory committee is the number one issue that we got from that is about reducing the number of animals that are being euthanized and increasing our adoption rate. I respect that we want to keep our facility clean, and we need to keep it clean, but I have a problem with taking and closing the facility when one of our top goals should be, it is, to increase the adoption rate in this county. How many current employees do we have at the animal shelter now since the sheriff has taken over animal control?
Myself and a manager and four others. So, there's a total of six right now.
Have we received any type of citations or anything from the state to say that our facility was not as clean as it needs to be?
Our last inspection was actually a 61 percent. Since I've come on board, I've been working till about from anywhere between 7:00 and 9:00 at night, and we've had quite a bit of comp time. And our last inspection, which was just done two weeks ago, was a 98.8.
That's very commendable, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Our staff is very new, very new. I have almost been bit my first week there. There's a lot of stuff that is not correct, and it's stuff that we've been, you know, very constantly just working on to try to get to where it needs to be.
What is our euthanasia rate at the current time?
So, when I started, it was 76 percent. We have already dropped down to 44, and we will continue to move down. We have more rescue than we do adoption. It takes a lot of time to network with 300 rescues.
Ms. Chairman, thank you. Ms. Chairman, personally, I will tell the board, I cannot and will not support closing the facility on Mondays. I would, as a commissioner, be in favor of moving those hours like they were on Wednesday if we wanted to open up at 1:00 to 5:30, but I would not and will not vote to close the facility. So, I just, you know, I'm one vote, but I just share that as communication with the board. I appreciate what you're trying to do, support you 100 percent, but again, I think we're going against what the citizens of this county have said they want to do, and that is to increase the adoption rate, and I don't see how we can do that while being closed.
One other thing I'd like to add is that I do think it's important that we stay open late one day. I think there are people who get off work at 5:00, 5:15, there's no way they can get there. Maybe they work Saturdays. A lot of people working six days right now. So, I think the experiment, if you will, to stay open till 7:00 is a good one, and I support that.
With us currently being open until 5:30, we're seeing a lot of people that are walking through the door at 5:20, meaning that we're going to be there until 6:00 or 7:00 again, causing overtime, and we're really hoping it does work out. We're going to push for it to be a special adoption night and have a name for it and market it and, you know, really try to get people to come during that time and see how it works out.
And I'd like to add that Eileen has bought several reasons for doing this, staff training, and also if somebody does run into comp time and you have most of the rest of your staff there, then Monday would be a good time to cut them loose and not get into comp time issues because the rest of her staff are basically, you know, time and a half if they run into comp time is something we're going to try to avoid. Now, we do have two part-timers on the weekend in addition to what Eileen mentioned before. So, I think the staffing compliment out there now for the facility is pretty good. I think it's what we need. And I know that when we had initially, the previous director had suggested a day off, they got to half a day. In her initial request, it was a full day as well. And I know that a full day is very prevalent across the state, at least one day during the work week. So, I'd like to add that for consideration.
Just an admin situation, more or less, you know, for, there's many other things between going to the lab, getting all of our finances up and things like that. We have to stop during our public time to be able to do that. So, that's why the thought process was have one admin day since we're open six days a week.
Commissioner, go ahead. Then I'll come back to you, and go ahead. Commissioner Mitchell's got it, and I'll come back to you.
Yes, I have several questions with it. First of all, what is your professional background?
From, I actually started as a nurse, and I was a nurse for 10 years before going into banking. Okay. And I was a vice president of the bank for 12 years, and then coming over to the shelter, I've actually been running a shelter for five years before this.
The reason I'm asking is prior to your coming, I went to the shelter several times, and I'm going to be blunt, it wasn't a cleanliness issue, it reeked. Okay? Not a stray smell, it reeked. So, I guess my first question is, have you instituted new soap and water cleanliness protocol since you moved there?
Yes.
Since you came in?
Yes.
Could you describe them?
So, one of the things that we found is that the system that we had, no one knew how to use to include my predecessors. So, we actually had the company to come out and show us how to use that, as well as to, one of the things that we do when we're closed is when everything is closed, we come in and completely take every animal out of the cages, bleach out the cages, and then put them back in. Not only is this helping with, as you would say, the reeking, but it also is helping with keeping the animals well, because a lot of our animals were sick, which is a huge problem with our adoption and why a lot more of them were being put down. Because we don't have a vet on staff, it's up to me to be able to assess that and to get them well. So, it's all of those things, plus we also use a different type of cleaner altogether. Besides bleach, we also have a new kind of cleaner that we use. And we, just our whole procedure from start to finish has been different, just going to train the employees to do specific things in different rooms. And I think the biggest thing, though, really was to have the company come out and put our underwater system on a timer and getting all the towels from on the floor. We had a bug problem, so we've had to have Bug Guy come out once a month. There's a lot of things going on like that in the shelter.
The reason I ask about your background is, would you describe as a nurse that the conditions out there were unhealthy for animals and for the staff?
Yes.
Okay. Are you currently able to offer your employees a normal two-day weekend at some point during the week?
No, not currently.
So, they, in terms of working seven days a week, each of your employees gets one day off?
That's right.
How many hours a week are you working? That's the most.
A lot, 60, maybe. I'm there every night. Any one of you can come by and see me. I'll be there between 7:00 and 9:00.
Well, then, you have a family, correct?
Yes.
Of your own? Have you reached out to other animal rescues other than Colonial Capital, Humane Society, German Shepherd Rescue?
Oh, yes.
Basset Hound Rescue, whatever?
National Rescues as well.
National Rescues, okay. That was the term I was looking for, thank you. And on average, how many animals a week would, that you estimate, are you turning over to these national rescues so that they can be placed? Because there's two issues here. One is our euthanasia rate, and one is the number of animals that are going out to be adopted, whether by us or by National Animal Retriever Rescue.
So, you know, this is a good point. We bring in between 4,500 and 5,000 animals a year, and we, as a county, we're putting down 76 percent of them. It's because what we were doing wasn't working, so I'm trying to change that, and I know how to do that because I've done it successfully for five years with Hornet and brought their rate down from 69 percent to 19 percent. That's what I plan to do here, but I really need the support and time to be able to do it. And when I say about how many animals go out to rescue, it's not per week, it's like a month thing. And what will happen is I will have anywhere from 30 to 70 animals being transported to different areas, sometimes even the country, and I need time to be able to coordinate that.
And that takes staff time, correct?
It does.
Okay. Under the current hour, operating hours, do you have time for your staff to market these animals on TV, on Facebook, to national rescue groups as you think is appropriate?
No.
Okay. So, my question is, thank you, sir.
I just had one other point I want the public to know, and that is, what day was your first day at this shelter?
May 1st.
May 1st, so you're in your fourth month.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the conditions weren't good. I commend what you've done so far.
Thank you.
And it takes time. Takes time, staff training to get everybody on board, and I commend you for what you've accomplished.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman, point well taken by my colleague about the number of hours, and definitely it's something that we as the board of commissioners always want to be mindful of is how much time are the employees who are servants of this county, just as we are to the citizens, how many hours they work. Having said that, Sheriff, I know sits here and his staff, I'm pretty sure that they put in a number of hours too. Not trying to be contradictory to you, but, you know, we have a service to render to the citizens of this county, and, you know, I think that when we're supposed to be open, we're supposed to be open. I want to go no further, Ms. Chairman.
Any other comments? Before I call for a motion, I'd just like to say one thing. We've come a long ways since we started this. We've come a long ways from 76 to 44 percent in a short period of time. Now, I visit that place probably once a week, coming over there to see what's going on, and there's a lot going on and a lot happening. I think the board needs to take a look at that, and I hear my colleagues or what they're saying, but we've got professionals here, we're providing more than anybody in the state is providing, we're providing more than what the statute states of what we should be. Now, the one thing that I do not want is our people to be not trained and an individual be bitten or mauled by an animal because they didn't properly know how to maintain it or care for it on that. I would like, if possible, if this board would go along, we understand what some are feeling, but give our staff the opportunity to put this in place for a six-month period, come back to us, and if it's not working, then we can change it. We changed it three months ago to one hour. We got a new leadership over there who's done strides on making this thing work and putting it out there. We have to look at our employees. I mean, I understand what they're saying, we have a service, but I think we're providing more than the service that's needed out there than anybody else, and we're still meeting it by 30 percent of anybody else in the state for hours moving out there. So, I'd like to, you know, if the board is, that's the motion the board will have to make, but we're not the professionals up here. We've got professionals right there, and we've got a damn good professional.
Thank you, sir.
Who's leading it on a good charge, so I'll entertain a motion.
Some move.
One question.
Yes, sir.
You said that they were working an hour and a half, so actually, you were working 34 hours, not 32 hours, is that correct?
Yeah, it'd be 34, yeah.
So, it's a difference of three hours.
Yeah.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, it'd be, once we had that. Okay. You have a motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Are we going on to close on a Monday?
Yes, closing in on Monday.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
No.
Commissioner McKay.
No.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark.
Yes.
Chairman Liner.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, Sheriff. Sheriff Chip Hughes, Jack White County Manager, and Jeffrey Merritt. Electronic offender monitoring position and child support enforcement deputy, deputy contract discussion.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. Coming for you this morning with a couple of things that we've been working on for quite some time. As you know, when I first came in the office, one of the things I did was start and evaluating the programs that were in place, our divisions, and making sure that we were utilizing our resources as they should be. One of the deficiencies I saw was in the electronic monitoring program. That program is a program, if properly used, provides a huge resource to the county, not only from cost avoidance, but it gets folks out of being incarcerated into our jail where we're responsible for medical costs and mental health issues, back into society where they can become or give the opportunity to become a productive member of society, and takes a lot of the burden off of the county. When I came in in December, we had roughly I came in, in December, we had roughly five to six people consistently on the program. Today, I have, and I've been giving y'all reports monthly on what we've been carrying. We've been anywhere from about thirty-five to, at times, we have exceeded forty. So, this program, if administered correctly, is very beneficial to us. However, I cannot consistently, and our people cannot consistently, monitor this thing as it should be done correctly with two individuals. The ladies that I have behind me here today are our electronic monitoring program, and I'm looking to grow this program by at least... Deputy, we've got a number, anywhere from twenty to thirty people that we could put on this program almost immediately, but I have capped it at forty right now, because we have to be able to effectively monitor these people. And these ladies get calls every day around the clock when these people violate the agreement of being on this program. The biggest thing here is, once again, from a medical standpoint, the cost avoidance, because the bulk of people that we are putting on this program have medical issues. And these are medical issues that our taxpayers, us, are having to pay for. And it's nearly impossible to budget for something like that because of the unknown, whether it be an open-heart surgery, root canal, cancer treatment. When they are in our custody, that, that is on us. So, there is a very thorough vetting process that these ladies, working closely with our judiciary, the District Attorney's Office, defense attorneys, family members, that they go through prior to putting anybody on this program. Violent offenders are not put on there. So, when I say this is vetted, they go through a lot of questioning by these ladies, and if they are not a good fit for the program, they don't get put on there. But as it stands right now, we've got a lot of people that are eligible for this program, that want to participate. Most of them, if they're not an indigent, will pay to be on the program. And it's not used as a moneymaker, it's used to recoup some of the cost of operating this program. So, one, I wanted to have them here so you could, one, see the ladies that do this. They are doing an outstanding job, they're overworked, and really, I, I just need to give them some relief. But I look to grow this program, and we'll look to grow it even more, and I will give you the statistical data needed to back that up, just like I have been. It's a great program, and like I said, when administered properly, it is a huge benefit to this county and the citizens of this county. So, I will entertain any questions, and I've got the ladies here that can talk about the day-to-day operations and what their day, nights, holidays, and weekends consist of.
Entertaining a motion?
So, move.
Motion and a second. Discussion.
Just as a positive comment, about two years ago, I had someone come to me and ask me, as an employer, if I would be, would consider employing somebody who was on this program. And I did so, with some reluctance, I might add. He turned out to be a dependable, hard-working individual, and he's now working for one of my friends who has a business in town, and I believe he's now off, I think he's, he's, whatever time he had to serve is, is up, and I think he no longer has to wear the monitoring. But I guess I would just say that he was, he was a gentle soul. He was not anybody that was at any risk to anybody, and, again, every day at work, work hard, whatever I told him to do. I worked with him one day, and he said, "We make a good team, don't we?" So, I, I got a kick out of that. But, any rate, he, he convinced me that this program makes sense. And, there's another lady that's on the program right now, who I'm very familiar with, and she also, I think, is zero risk to the public, and yet, she's out, and we're not, not housing her. So, I think that, that's a positive thing. So, I, I, I support this program in having actually experienced it.
Any other comments?
Chairman, I'd like to say I remember when we didn't have this program, and we saw fit that we needed a program such as this. Putting peoples in jail, let them sit there, doing nothing, thinking up more evil. And so, we felt like it would be better to try to get them out of our system, so we wouldn't have to continue to pay all the bills with the taxpayer money, and try to get them out, so we can give them a job to go to work and take care of their own family. And this program has, has worked, and it seems like it's getting better now. So, we are not spending money, spending the kind of money, but we are saving the kind of money if we can get them out of our jail system and to a job that they can pay their own expense. So, I, I'm really sure of continuing to support this program.
Any other comments? Sheriff, I got a couple here for you. I want to make sure the public understand, this is really nothing new. My first year on this board, we authorized the Sheriff's Department to have three people. The numbers went down drastically, and we cut them down to where they are now. So, this is nothing new to the public. We're bringing it back up to what this board has said years ago. My only question to you, you've got some great people working for you. Those two young ladies have been with me ever since I've been on this board, and they're great. Are you planning on keeping them in the position?
Chairman, that's a, that's a very good question. If you'll notice, this position here is, I'm asking for a corporal's position, because as this program has grown, both of these young ladies have certainly stepped up. But, Ms., Ms. Nikki Koontz here, this position is specifically a corporal position I'm asking for, and that is a leadership role within my administration. She has shown those leadership traits, she is very well-respected by her peers, she's extremely respected by the judiciary, the defense bar, and the DA's office. And, like I said, these two ladies here have grown this program under the direction of Chief West, from five to where we are currently, and that's anywhere between thirty-five and forty, and are prepared to take it to the next level. So, without these two wonderful women here, I, I would not be able to justify asking for additional resources. But, they have, single-handedly, saved the county hundreds of thousands of dollars, probably, in medical costs, and have just run this program extremely efficient. And I, I could not be more proud of them. And my intentions will be to promote Deputy Koontz to the position of corporal, she will oversee this division.
That's good.
Sheriff, I didn't mean to put you on the spot there. I didn't mean to want to go, "Who was going to get promoted?" I just wanted to make sure. They were going to stay in the program.
They were going to stay in the program. I'm very proud of both of them, and I, I've had a number of conversations with both of them about this, and it, it's very well-deserving. And I, I can't thank them both enough.
You've got two, you've got, you've got plenty of fine people out there, but I know them personally, of being up here and dealing with them and everything else, and running this program, and they're super individuals.
Couldn't have made a better choice.
As your whole staff. Don't get me wrong.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one other point, and that the people that are out have the opportunity to get a job if they can find one. That's an important point, that our employers in this county are willing to give these people a chance, number one. And number two, they're not only not costing our taxpayers money, they're...
Correct.
They're actually paying into the system. They're, they're paying taxes. So, I think that's a really important point, that our employers give these folks an opportunity when they get, when they get that application, so.
And, and opening these beds up when we're putting them out does give us an opportunity to look at other revenue streams, where we can try to fill some gaps in expenses. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman Linn?
Yes. Thank you very much.
Got it. Okay. Chair, Sheriff, who's your other deputy?
Deputy Knight, yes, sir. She, we were, we brought Ms. Knight on a couple months ago. She's working in the courts. My intention's going to be to move her into the electronic monitoring position that's going to be vacated by Mrs. Koontz, provided she accepts this promotion. She has already been in training with the electronic monitoring division. We've had her on the court side, so she's working very closely with the DA, the defense bar, and the judiciary on a daily basis, and has proven herself a very valuable member of the team. She serves in a bailiff's position right now. She came to us from probation and parole out of Pitt County, so we were very fortunate to get her, very qualified, and doing an outstanding job.
No, welcome to have you.
Welcome aboard. Welcome aboard. Okay, Sheriff, you're up next.
The next piece is the Child Support Enforcement Deputy Contract Discussion. This is, I did a, kind of want to say a beta test or pilot program about three months ago, where I pulled one of my deputies that is extremely knowledgeable in child support enforcement. And I did this because, once we came in, we saw that there was a huge backlog of child support papers that were not being served. Looking into it, the reason why is because we did not have the resources to put, to dedicate to this problem we have. So, we were talking about hundreds of papers and thousands of dollars that were owed parents because one chose not to pay, or they were in violation of some type of court order. And the only time we were coming across these individuals was when we were doing maybe a checkpoint, a traffic stop, responding to a domestic violence call, something of that nature, when it wasn't started by virtue of a child support call. So, I pulled one of my deputies off of a shift, which is not an easy thing to do, when you take your shift from six to five, that does leave a void. But we did it as a thirty-day trial to just see what we could accomplish. And, our numbers quadrupled, at least, in the amounts of papers that were being served, and the amount of revenue that was brought in, and the money that was collected to get to these parents to be able to provide for their children, from these parents that weren't willing to pay or were trying to avoid us. And this deputy that I used, I was able to recruit him from Pitt County, where he had worked nothing but child support for five years. So, he knew how the pro, the program worked, he implemented those same processes here, and it come with tremendous success. However, I could not keep him there forever. I had to bring him back onto the shifts to help fill the gap, where we had parts of the county that wasn't covered, because we had one less man on that shift. So, it, it turned out that if we put this in place, that it works. It works. And I was getting phone calls, two and three days after I took him off that detail from DSS, wondering where Deputy Farrell was. How do we get a hold of him? Is he no longer working with us? That sort of thing. And, in fact, he had just gone back to the shift. So, and talking with the county manager and the people at Maximus about, who, I guess, are in the audience today, and they contract with DSS in regards to child support enforcement, I had done some research with other counties and found that you could contract with DSS or the state, and they will partially fund, or sixty-seven percent fund, a deputy sheriff for the purpose of solely working on child support issues. We had made the case, showed that we had a problem here, and if the right personnel were put in place, we could help bring those numbers down substantially and bring in records amounts of revenue, and those folks that are in violation of court orders, get them where they need to be. So, like I said, working closely with the county manager, we are working on some contracts that would be beneficial to the county and DSS to be put in place and to be considered by y'all, so we could enhance this program and move it forward, as opposed to sitting back. Because every day, my deputies are not out there specifically serving child support, the numbers are growing. Where we actually cut these files down to a workable level, they are now right back to where they were, because I don't have a dedicated source, and that, that's certainly not fair to the parents that need this money to clothe their children, medical needs, food, the basic necessities, and, and housing. So, my request is that y'all would consider helping us grow this program, giving the county manager the authority, once we get the contract in place that's acceptable to all of us, to partially fund a position, or fund thirty-three percent or thirty-four percent of it from a county level, and let us get this deputy out there doing what he does best, finding these people, getting the collections back up to where they need, and getting these folks the help they need. The specifics of the program, I can, you know, we can have Maximus speak on it, or maybe Jack, but that's where we are right now. We've tossed a couple contracts back and forth. The county manager and myself did not feel they were in the best interest of the county, so we've kind of gone back to the drawing table. I've taken some, reached out to other sheriffs throughout the state that do this program, and they have sent me their contracts, which I have forwarded over to Jack. So, that's kind of where we are right now, but, well, I guess we just need approval of the concept, Jack, and give you the authority, once we get the proper...
Yes, sir.
...contract in place.
So, just to kind of caveat what the sheriff said there, I mean, we're, we're at a point where the money's not going to change. It's just how we have a contractual agreement between Maximus and the sheriff, and then DSS and the county, and how all those moving pieces work together. If you like the way that the program sounds, as the sheriff described, what I'd ask you to do today is to go ahead and authorize, at the point we feel comfortable with the contract, to go ahead and move forward the program. I will note, Sheriff, just to be clear, that year one is the most expensive year you're going to have in this program, because you have to buy the vehicle and the gun, the uniform, and all that. Reoccurring costs in this will be approximately fifty thousand dollars. If you look at Attachment 6B, you'll see that it's a... Is it a corporal position as well, Sheriff?
No, sir. This is a...
Okay. It's listed on my sheet as a corporal, but...
That would be for the electronic monitoring was corporal. This one should be for deputy sheriff, pay grade sixty-three, I believe. Is that right?
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three, too.
Well, I've got a mistake on my paper, but, bottom line is, you're approximately looking at fifty thousand dollars a year. The county would be obligated to thirty-three percent of that cost, sixty-seven would be part of our cost share program through DSS, which Jeff can speak to. But it's just like any other cost share program we have in DSS, whether it's child support, adult protective services, whatever it may be that falls under that program, where we get money back. At this time, I'm fairly certain, I want to speak with Mr. Arie this week, but we're probably pretty close to having a contract. I don't think there's any, any more road bumps there. And I know Willie's been working real hard with us. Willie, if you'll stand up just a second, we're getting Willie's with Maximus. He's our site manager here in town, so. Sheriff, that's all I have. So, I mean, that's basically where we're at.
Entertaining a motion?
I'm making a motion to support.
Motion and second. Discussion.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As someone who spent eighteen years chasing a delinquent ex-spouse through two counties, trying to collect child support, I'd like to correct something. This is not about aiding the parents, this is about aiding the children. And it's rent, food, school supplies, the dentist bill, and the ability to go to the doctor. And I was horrified when I found out that a parent goes to court, gets a court order to get these monies collected, and then cannot receive these monies to aid their children because the court order could not be served. With it, it's, I'm, I'm beyond horrified. So, yes, I support this program and proceeding on with, with this contract and, and moving forward to address this deficiency in the strongest possible terms to aid the children in this county.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chairman, just for clarification, you say these two sheets are backwards?
Yes, sir.
I don't, I think they're, they're not actually...
The EOM is, is the sixty-three, which is the deputy sheriff, which should... The EOM is, is the 63, which is the deputy sheriff, which should be the child support deputy sheriff.
I think they're mislabeled. If you look at the, the first one I have says EOMP Deputy Sheriff Corporal, but then under gray and step, it's showing the deputy sheriff.
63.
It's showing the child support position. If you look at the other one, it says child support deputy sheriff, it shows the corporal position. So you've got, you've got a problem in the front, and I, it must've just slipped by us here, but, um, in any way, you're talking about, it's virtually the same amount of money. I mean, there's not a lot of difference.
Thousand dollars difference, yeah. Sir, anything else?
No, thank you.
I apologize for that.
Jeff, you have any questions? Jeff, you have any comments or anything you want to say?
I just say that, um...
Come on up here.
I guess with the funding pieces, from my experience in DSS, the 66% has always been there, and I don't see that going away. And you also apply that to the, you know, the operating costs of the vehicle and the uniform and everything you do to have to outfit the deputy. So that's something else that maybe that you wanted to know as well. It just won't go towards the salary, but any equipment will be needed.
Any further discussion?
No.
Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Chairman Light?
Yes. Sheriff, thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Jeff, since I was so eager to get the sheriff up here first, I'll come back. No, it's not you, uh, it's not you, Don. Don't get, don't get ahead of yourself.
You come stand up here too.
I messed up because I wanted the sheriff up here. You know, his, his, his pretty face I needed to have up here.
Dennis is giving me this weapon of mass destruction, so I'll see what I can do with it, but, um, DSS, when the way Medicaid is paid for, um, throughout North Carolina is getting ready to go, undergoes the most radical change since its inception, um, on what we're being told, so I just wanted to come and update the board and allow the citizens to see, you know, what those changes will be. Now, you commonly hear it referred to as Medicaid transformation, but the state likes to give everything two or three names, so you could hear Medicaid managed care or Medicaid reform, so if you hear those terms, it's probably interchangeable with what's happening here. So, we will move forward. So we just want to talk about what's changing a little bit, um, and that's basically about the way that it's paid and people are enrolled. You've heard the old, the old way things were paid for was called fee for service. That program was called Medicaid Direct. They're now going to what's going to be called prepaid health plans or Medicaid managed care, um, and just phase one, which there's two phases that will be occurring. We'll talk about phase one mainly right now and touch on phase two because that's going to be occurring sometime later, which we'll be sure to come back and update you about that as well. The first, how Medicaid currently exists, your fee for service, I'm not going to read all of this, but, um, if people, if someone's determined eligible for Medicaid, wants to come through the eligibility process at our office, um, and they turn in all their paperwork and we verify their income, then they're able to go and see their primary care physician and, you know, they pay for what service they receive. So I try to give a little example there, say that, um, we determine eligibility for 12 months, um, so the Smith family, like I said, and I don't know if these prices are right, but they're just an example, so say that John comes and that year he has $500 for physical and blood work, so does Joan, and then Julie, you know, their child, you know, with a newborn, she's going every month, getting immunizations, so they pay about $1,000 for that. So their total cost for 12 months would be $2,000 for the Smith family under the fee for service direct. All those claims are paid during the year. Um, the minimum that they pay is $3 a month, whether there's no services involved, those are, that goes towards the behavioral health costs to help fund those. Under the current contract, which is, on the current structure, which is important is that the medical providers, those fees are determined statistically with the state, and that's through the Division of Health Benefits. And you see the services that it provides, a nu, a number of services. So the following populations that you see here will remain in the Medicaid Direct program. They won't be going in phase one. I won't go through all of those, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those about them.
Commissioners, have any questions?
So this is where the change is going to be. We're going from the fee for service direct to a prepaid health plan. And instead of contracting with daily providers, the state's going to contract with insurance companies. There's been five awarded, and I'll go over which companies those are. So what they'll do is that if an individual coming in to our office and they're on Medicaid now, or they come in on February 1st, 2020, instead of just being on Medicaid and they get to pick a doctor, they have to choose a plan. Um, and with those plans, what happens is that they will, they're doing outreach now, which I'll talk about, and they're trying to get people to enroll with them. But I want to talk about the pay structure a little bit, um, that's different to start off with. And what they'll do is that the state will pay these plans a capitated rate for each person that's enrolled in their plan to provide them the services that are covered under Medicaid. So instead of, with the Smith family now, instead of them paying for their blood work and their physicals and the lot of services they get, they're going to pay the plan a certain amount of money each month regardless whether they get any services or not, whether they have blood work or whether they have open heart surgery if it's co, covered under Medicaid, with the services that the state has determined that will be paid for under the prepaid health plan. So if you see now the Smith family, what they would do is that they would pay, and I don't know if this is right, because they won't give me decapitated rates, I've emailed and emailed and emailed, so, um, once I get those, I'll try to let you know, but it's probably not a very simple answer. The Smith family, they say that the, the state's going to pay the prepaid health plan $500 a month for each one. So instead of that $2,000 cost of, that would, in old fee for service, they're going to pay the prepaid health plan $18,000 of cost, so they're hoping that those individuals that don't have a lot of health needs and those ones that do that go over the cost, they kind of balance out and they're still able to have a positive bottom line. So we talked about a capitated rate, how it'll be paid, um, under the structure, um, it's going away from the fee for service. And another thing I want to talk about, hopefully, and they're doing some preventative measures, is that they want to try to offer some value-added services. And there's a couple of those smoking cessation programs, gym memberships, fitness classes, and they're not including the capitated rate, so these prepaid health plans are trying to put preventative measures in there that maybe alleviate some medical conditions that they could with some of these positive healthy behaviors moving forward. And you see some money there. The dollar fund of $650 million is what the pilots will provide, um, to try and implement those healthy opportunities in the state. I haven't heard about any of those coming to our region yet, but once I do, I'll make sure, or if we do, I'll make sure that we, um, communicate that to you so we'll know the source, the resources that we have available in our area. What else is different is that each physician provider is going to have to contract with each healthcare provider, so instead of doing one with getting the rate from determined by the Medicaid fees, they're going to have to contract with the five different providers to be able to pay, be paid for by that provider and enroll with that provider. The beneficiaries, I want to let something else note, you know, this too, before, the old Medicaid card was this long rectangular blue card. People may have gone to the doctor's office and seen it, but, um, they're going to be getting cards with the provider's information on there. It's going to look like a regular health, health insurance card, so, um, I'll talk about the capitated rates and all of that, and, you know, this is going to be called Medicaid Managed Care, the prepaid health plan. Some important dates that you want to know for Craven County residents, we're in phase two of phase one. There's two phases of phase one. Currently now, there's about a third of the state that is already going through, um, and having their beneficiaries that have been identified to enroll in the prepaid health plans are going through that now. Our enrollment packets are going to start going out October 1st, 2019, so what they'll do is they'll go on their NCFAST system. We've been trying to make sure and working reports that all addresses are correct, so individuals will get this information, providing them what the next steps are when it comes to enrolling in a prepaid health plan. So you see they'll get those about two weeks before open enrollment, it'll go for a period of almost 60 days. They'll send out a reminder postcard halfway through that. The next one is the auto assignment, which this will probably be a big point of contention in that if you don't enroll to an open enrollment, is that they're going to put an algorithm in NCFAST and they will automatically assign someone to a plan, um, which you could have, I'll just go back to the Smith family, say they were seeing Dr. Jones, and they assigned them to Plan C, and Dr. Jones was not in that plan, and they've been seeing Dr. Jones for, or finished with seeing Dr. Jones for four or five years, that could cause a point of contention. But they'll have a 90-day period to change to another plan if they choose to do so after being auto-assigned to a plan. So there is a window where they can come back and change that plan to get in to one that has their preferred medical provider. Um, those health plan coverages are going to start on February 1st of 2020, where they'll stop paying the fee for service and they'll go to the capitated rate per individual will be paid to the prepaid health plan by the state. And these are the regions now, regions two and four are going in November 2019, and Craven County's over here in region six, and we will be going in February 20. You can only see they just cut off that top part of the state and everyone else is going in February 2020. This is the second phase of Medicaid transformation with the tailored plans. They're going to start about in the middle of 2021. The information that we have now, we'll come back and give you more specific dates when we, um, have those. But those are targeted plans specifically, um, for individuals with significant behavioral health needs and intellectual and developmental disabilities. So the state has gone through and, um, looked at the services the individuals were getting and are giving us information about the ones that will still stay on Medicaid fee for service direct, that's what these individuals will stay on until the tailored plans are introduced in, um, the middle of 2021. Now, this are some examples of individuals, um, that they've told us who will not be on the fee for service direct through phase one. They will be going in with the tailored plan. So children in foster care who have been adopted, um, CAP programs for children and disabled, residents of a state veterans home, individuals who are duly eligible for Medicaid and Medicare. And another example was in individuals who's lived in a nursing facility for over 90 days since they have pretty extensive medical needs there. I, I want to show you what the health insurance cards will kind of look like. Um, as you can see right there, they look like I've, they look like what I've got in my wallet from the county, um, so those are cards that will be presented, um, when they, individuals who are receiving Medicaid go to the doctor. Um, here are the providers, they're the ones that were awarded the contracts through the state. You'll probably see many of these individuals trying to market in the county. They may want to try to, you know, set enough in Mumfest or other types of community events to let individuals know what services that their, um, plans are going to provide and how they can help them. They've been communicating that with us. It's important with our, with the, our department that we stay neutral. We really work with a lot of other private providers in other areas, such as like childcare, and we have to remain neutral, but getting the information to where they can try to go, look and see what plan best fits them. But the state is also providing resources to assist individuals with that too, which I want to talk about as well. Do you have a question, Mr. Sampson? Do you have a question? Mr. Sampson? And here to outreach, um, they're going to be hopefully going to community events, hold town hall meetings in regions and, you know, in different health fairs, they'll be reaching out. And here's some other outreach. I put these links on here, we'll be putting these flyers up in our office, um, and so individuals can see them there. There's also links to them on the, um, you know, North Carolina government website of the Division of Medical Services. And our office is getting regular communication about that as well, so information can be relayed to our beneficiaries who come in and ask questions also. The enrollment brokers is what the state is trying to do to help people enroll in a plan that will best meet their needs and help them continue with, um, the medical providers that they're currently with, and they have contracted actually with Maximus. Mr. Willie doesn't have anything to do with that, so, um, if you have a question, he will be the one to call. But, um, what it is, is that there's going to be a number, and there's other ways that individuals can enroll too. They've created a mobile app, um, there's also the website that individuals can go on and enroll in. What there's activity, you'll see those activities there, um, majority of those, I think, will go through the telephone method, that number right there, um, that individuals can call and speak with someone. At the enrollment, in the enrollment broker that's located in Morrisville, what we've been told is that there's about 50 individuals there for the whole state, so I'll go, went back to that map, and we're in the larger region, um, so I expect an increase in telephone calls and backlogs. They did say that they have, they, Maximus, basis of them awarding this contract is that they have done this with other states who have gone for this, to this cost model, and , um, they actually have backup facilities in other states that would take the rollover calls, so hopefully it will not be a prolonged wait. The information that I've received, I think they said at the last meeting I went to is during the phase one of phase one. The wait time's only been about three minutes or so, so it hasn't been a prolonged amount of times, and hopefully it'll remain that way. Some of the local impacts, I just wanted to, um, inform you, the Division of Health Benefits gave us some February, what they predict in February 2020, so 20,190 individuals will be enrolled in the Medicaid program, and 14,393 of those, um, will be required to enroll in phase one of managed care, prepaid health plan. So about, we'll have, we'll still have about 5,800 individuals who will still be waiting to be on that tailored health plan. Um, there'll be a very, very small few that will still remain in the fee for service. Once we have that information, we'll update you regarding that as well. And again, I've already spoke about contracts with the physicians and providers. Um, they're, they're doing that now, negotiating rates with those prepaid health plans as we speak. Some of our impacts, I just want to make clear, our eligibility rules will not change. The income, the income limits aren't changing, so if they're eligible, they're going to still be in the same eligibility rules prior to February 1st, 2020 as they are after. We haven't been told anything about that, and any changes regarding that will be separate of the Medicaid transformation. We're going to have those local materials in our office to share with beneficiaries, make sure they know about the enrollment broker and telephone contacts where they can make sure they're enrolled in the right plan. Now, with this change, as we get closer to the enrollment period, um, and especially the 90-day period after the auto assignment, we are probably going to expect an increase in in-person visits and telephone calls asking us about this, um, in addition to the calls and walk-in visits that we have, um, related to our other services that we provide. This is always a wild card. Y'all probably tired of NCFAST. I'm about tired of it too, but, um, NCFAST is, you know, having to go through some changes has been minimal, um, but what we've seen now hasn't caused major issues, but as they see, they need to add more, um, information and programs to NCFAST that has resulted in glitches in the past and lost work time due to system availa, unavailability or slowness, since that's where all of our eligibility work is done. And I get emails on a daily basis, um, regarding issues related to NCFAST and, um, issues that we have with it. And we're al, we're also working with the state. Our association really pushed and said that we needed an enrollment broker on site during open enrollment. Um, I don't, I don't anticipate that person being here every day, but we're working on them with office space and getting some set days there, so if individuals don't want to call or on a website, we can have them get in contact with that individual to schedule an appointment to help them enroll in a plan that'll best fit the needs for their family and they can continue hopefully medical care with the provider that they, um, are used to seeing. Another big responsibility is that for the individuals on the prepaid health plan, as of now, we have individuals in our office that help, um, schedule appointments. We'll work closely with Kelly, um, for the non-emergency medical transportation, those responsibilities will now be done by the prepaid health plan. And I'll tell you some of my concerns with that. We've got staff in our office who are from Craven County, they know Craven County, um, we've heard from the prepaid health plans that they're going to try to get individuals who are familiar with the region that they'll be serving. And we know our clients very well too, because we've had clients that have, you know, relied on these services to get to the medical trips for some time, um, and we hope that when they call, there'll be us accommodating and understanding of some of the circumstances that we would, um, in the prepaid health plan. So that will be another big change. I would tell you that I think between the other 5,800 is where you still have a majority of your NEMT administrative responsibilities, so we'll have to see what, how that changes our workload as we move forward with this, um, since we still will have a, you know, pretty big responsibility in, um, scheduling and administering those Medicaid transportation appointments. Another thing that I want to hit on is that, that's the cost. In 2017, the state in their budget, they put a language in there that said that if the state is not solely responsible for eligibility areas, then the cost of the payback shall be to the county. So in the first example I told you with Joan Smith, if it's a $2,000 cost, that's what we would have paid, but now the payback will be a capitated rate, so that, the likelihood of increased payback would go up.
And I, Jeff, that's such an important point there. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but, I mean, that's, that cost could be, if you had a massive amount of ineligible people, say somebody just did it wrong for a couple of days, Jeff and I's worst fear, I mean, knock on wood here, you know, your payback's going to be much greater in this methodology than it would have been in what we're doing now. Jeff and I have been looking with Craig, our finance director, about an insurance policy. There are some sort of liability coverages out there right now. They're, they're relatively new and only a few counties have ventured into it. The cost is somewhat high, I think, but, I mean, we're still trying to figure out what this will be, but at some point, we want to discuss it with the board, that insurance policy, and see your interest in something like that. policy and see your interest in something like that.
And I'll tell you what we're, what we try to do to limit, you know, those ineligible cases is that we, the state requires us, I think, to review 7%. We're up around, we try to do around 20%, I believe, but you know, it's almost impossible from a staffing standpoint to review 100% of the work that you do. And what we have is that with our newer workers, we, you know, we're coming on, learning the program and learning the system, we review their cases, scrutinize them very closely before we start letting them, you know, be able to work more independently when it comes to doing those eligibility cases, which they still receive regular ongoing reviews. And I will say that, you know, our staff in income maintenance, and I will have to applaud them, they do a very good job of, you know, teaching and trying to always have a continuous quality improvement when it comes to those cases to make sure that we are not falling in error from eligibility standpoint, because they're well aware of the consequences to, you know, not only the individual, the beneficiary, but also to the taxpayers in Craven County.
Jeff, just in the, in the fee for service, not the capitated one, there were some paybacks this year from other counties that ranged from a couple hundred bucks to several hundred thousand dollars.
I think tens of thousands.
Oh, tens of thousands, okay.
It's what I've heard. I've been trying to get those numbers too, public information, but I've been emailing them for about a month and a half and I'm not getting any response from the state. And that's what I'm trying to get, you know, discussing with the county manager about is to kind of see what's findings for being out there. And in that, and in that liability insurance, well, it's not just for Medicaid, it's also for other eligibility programs, which they've seen some, I'm going a little bit off topic there. They've seen some large paybacks with adoption assistance payments as well, so it will cover that also. But that is the presentation I have. I wouldn't do much, too much damage with a clicker or break it, Dennis. I'll be happy to answer, try to answer any questions that you may have.
Board, any questions? Okay. Jeff, first of all, thank you. I had asked the manager to get with Jeff to bring this forward. I sit on the Trillium board and this is a moving target. Every month this thing is changing.
Yes.
So I wanted the board to be aware of what's coming down. I think Jeff put a good coat on it, but I think it's not probably aware strong enough. I think even health department is going to be involved eventually. It's going to have some effect. So I wanted the board to be aware of what's coming. I can see, since we're going to be depending on NC fast, which has been the savior for the state that's turned it into our nightmare, you know, is being more people probably having to come through. So I just wanted this board to be aware. Jack, if you put on your calendar in October, I think we need to bring Dave back in from Trillium and bring us completely an update on everything and what's moving. Like I say, every month this thing is changing and going through. I think they just had, they just settled the lawsuits because they had a couple lawsuits on the firms who didn't get the contract, so that's been settled on that, working with. But this is the most dynamic change in Medicaid than we've probably seen in 40 years of what's coming down.
Yes.
And it's, it's not finished and it's going to have an impact.
It will.
It is going to have an impact and this board needs to be prepared to what it's going to mean and what we may be looking at, how we're going to respond to it. So I thank you for what you've brought forward, but I think there's more coming.
And I'll give you just an example in fact, Kelly will tell you that, you know, we have families that are going through, you know, a lot of busy times and sometimes we may have a child that has a, has an appointment at a specialist at Chapel Hill, they can only get in, you know, within six months. And they may forget to call within that three days they're supposed to call before the trip and they'll call us and say, you know, we just forgot. You know, if we don't get his appointment, it'll be another 90 days. So, you know, we are able to work with Kelly's office, you know, in that manner and some of our other private providers if we need to, to get them there and talk with them about what they can better do to plan the next time so it doesn't come to this point of crisis. But in the event, say that the prepaid health plan is doing that, I don't know how much they're going to be able to work with us, which, you know, then the child's not going to the specialist, they'll call us for a child neglect report, then there's a social worker out in someone's home for up to 45 days trying to see what they can do to get them to the next appointment, which won't fall within that 45 days. So, you know, it's just a little bit of resources and effort and collaboration on the front end saves a lot of heartache and, you know, invasion of privacy where it's not needed on the back end. So that's, that's really some of my concern is just that being able to have that partnership and collaboration and trying to do what's best for the families that we serve may erode some with going to some of these private companies.
And I appreciate you bringing that up and I think this board needs to be aware of that as well, because we're going to start receiving calls and getting calls because of that, going out there. Private entities are going to be involved now to where we've been involved and they're saying we're not meeting our obligations or our requirements, which is no longer, it's been taken away from us, been taken away from you and Kelly on that. So it's going to come to us, they're going to call us, why aren't you doing this? And we're not, we don't have, we don't have the say in it and everything else. So this was an informational for this board, there's more coming and I think we all need to be prepared of what's going to come after the first of the year on that.
And if it's, and if you, I'd be more than happy once, you know, after February, a period of 30 or 60 days afterwards, to kind of tell you some of the things that we've seen in our changes and how we assist our clients with those Medicaid beneficiaries through phase one, I'd be more than happy to do that, so.
Appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair, and I hate to belabor a point, but there's something I'm really excited about and since Jeff's at the podium, I hope you'd take a minute to share with you about the Child Advocacy Center that we've been working on with the sheriff and our other police partners and judicial partners. I think it's a great program, but Jeff, you, you.
Oh, I can, that's, I'd be more than happy to do that. Currently, when we have children who have been physically or sexually abused or very serious neglect, what we do is that, right now Teddy Bear out of Greenville serves about 29 counties in East North Carolina. And I don't have a map, but if you looked at the map of North Carolina and the shaded areas, you would see child advocacy centers located, and once you go 95 West, virtually all, I mean, the vast majority of those counties are shaded. They have a center that's serving either one county or two counties. But you look 95 East and you see one in Sampson, you'll see one in Greenville and you'll see one up around Elizabeth City and they only do forensic interviews. But what that child advocacy center does is that we go out and there's a case of sexual abuse. I'll just do an example and we'll refer that child to that center. And what they do is that they have forensic interviewers, they're trained in interviewing techniques of children who have gone through trauma. They record those interviews and they have a medically trained professional there who does evaluations. It's not like a rape exam or rape kit when you would go to the hospital per se, it's more of a child friendly one that looks for any physical signs of sexual abuse and also examines the nature of any physical abuse. Well, you know, with Teddy Bear, I know they're trying to serve a large area, but some of those appointments get pushed out four weeks, eight months. And when you're working with children who have endured that type of trauma, you want to try to get them in there as soon as possible because, so they can go, because they've either made a disclosure or something's just happened and they can go ahead and interview that child and you've got, you'll have a law enforcement person there, whoever the jurisdiction is, we've been working with Havelock Police Department and New Bern Police Department as well as the sheriff regarding this. And they'll also go through a medical exam within, what they're telling us, within 72 hours. But if it's an emergency basis, they'll have their medical person here as well. So we've been working on trying to do that. It started last, last year, the district attorney Scott Thomas in our office started talking and seeing the need for that. So it's one of the things we hope that it does is that it increases the percentage of prosecution for these individuals and, you know, holds them accountable for the actions that they've done to children. But we started trying to do this and we looked at the complexity of setting one of ourselves and there's a group in the western part of the state called South Mountain Children's Services. And they have set up five of them in the western part of the state. They're also setting up one for Nash, Wilson, Edgcombe. And we, originally we talked with Carteret and Pemlico about doing a regional one here. Well, Carteret wanted to go and, you know, go on their own, so that was fine. We're still working with Pemlico about trying to create one here in New Bern that would serve our county and Pemlico County. And Carteret would also be there, they're working with South Mountain too, so our centers could kind of support each other because their requirement is that they have to be available 24/7 when, you know, the type of trauma is not on a scheduled basis. So we're really looking forward to that. We've got a meeting on Thursday. I think we, they put out a recruitment notice for a center director and that center director wears many hats. They manage the administrative responsibilities of the shelter, they could be the forensic interviewer. And what it also do is that it will provide victim advocacy as well, because that victim advocate will kind of work with that family throughout the process of the court process and, you know, especially the criminal part. And also they'll be, they'll have the ability to provide mental health services, trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy, which is preferred, you know, behavioral therapy intervention for children who have gone and gone, this type of trauma as well. But that doesn't necessarily mean that they have to get it at that center. If there's a other facility who've been providing that, they can get it there as well. It's just something that they have to, they have to offer in order to get funding through the governor's crime commission. And South Mountain has written all the grants, they've set up, like I said, numerous centers for there. Chris Jernigan is actually the chair of the Children's Advocacy Center Association right now. So we're very excited about that and hope by the end of this year, early next year, that we'll be up and running and we'll have somewhere to serve the citizens of Craven and Pemlico County through this as well.
It's just, Mr. Chair, I mean, the reason I ask Jeff, it's such a needed program here. I hope you heard, anywhere from four weeks to eight months now. And we know with children that we need to get to them as soon as possible and I think having a 72-hour window or even shorter is so important in this county and to have one located here in Craven is a win for us, so.
And they're talking about with our interviews, at least 24 hours at the most. If it's something where it's acute trauma that's come in, it's happened right there, they're going to provide someone to us as soon as possible to get in there and see that child in order to do that interview for us, so. Jeff, I didn't know if there's anything you wanted from what you've heard so.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions?
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, you can come forward, sir. Next on the list is planning, Don Baumgartner, planning director, subdivision for approval and request for additional to state maintained secondary road systems.
Yes, sir. The first subdivision for consideration this morning is called King Creek at Cherry Branch. It is the third phase of that development. Property is owned by Coastal Piedmont Developers. It is located in Township Five off of King Creek Drive. It's down off the NC 306 as you're going down to the ferry. The subdivision contains 27 lots on approximately 24.37 acres and the lots are going to be served by the county's water system and individual septic systems. In order to move forward, a vote to approve the subdivision is needed.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. Don, in that subdivision, in my area there, how, how do waters drain? Are they going to hurt all the subdivisions by being in the back?
There, there's some, there's quite a bit of natural fall in there and I can envision that it should be any particular problem there, but we can, we can look into that a little bit more if you want us to and.
I'd love to do it, just in case, I want them to come to me and say, all the waters come back on us now since they put the new development in the back, in the back, because I went the other day.
Okay.
And it's kind of like up in the hill a little bit, it's coming down.
Right.
Those people don't get flooded unless it's my hurricane.
We'll, we can go back and take a look at that, let you know what we find, if there's any concerns. Yep.
If you approve it, you can come back before they do anything?
Well, at this particular conjuncture, they've actually built the roads in there and they've done most of the improvements. So, you know, they're left with just a very small amount of work to be done and we're holding a bond on that for grading the shoulders of the road, but I think.
This is phase three, right?
Yes. I think if there is an issue down there, technically the county's still holding money and we'll need to have them address that if that has not been something that has been overlooked or something that we, we need to get addressed. I think that most of the time the engineers look at that kind of thing, but we can go back and look at it again.
Please do.
Because whenever you have a cleared piece of property, you get a tremendous amount of runoff versus, you know, once, once you get grass and trees.
They're probably going to complain about it, but once you vote on it, we can look into it or you look into it, make sure that there's no, have a drainage.
I'll look into it and I'll get back with you. I want it, yes, sir.
Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Don.
Yes, sir. The next item is a request for addition to state maintained secondary road system for roads in the River Trace subdivision. We have received a road addition resolution to approve Sanderling Lane, Pheasant Drive and Farret Run Lane for those roads to be turned over to the state of North Carolina for maintenance. After the resolution is passed and forwarded to NC DOT for their final consideration, then the roads, once we've adopted this and they've approved it, the roads would then be turned over to the state for maintenance.
Mr. Chair, where are the roads located at?
River Trace subdivision over in Township Seven. Yeah. It's off Mattamore's Lane, Mattamore's Lane, Braces Creek Road.
Braces Creek Road.
Okay, I know that it now, okay, thank you.
Okay. Entertainer motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Attorney Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Don, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Solid Waste, Gene Hodges, Rusty Cotton?
Morning, Board.
Good morning.
As a part of disaster preparedness, Craven County has historically held preposition contracts for debris removal and clearance services and debris monitoring services. Both activities are typically reimbursable by FEMA for a federally declared event. On July 29th, Craven County issued a request for proposal, RFP, for disaster debris removal and clearance services and a request for qualifications, RFQ, for disaster debris monitoring services. Those solicitations were due on August 6th. Craven County received six responses to the RFP for debris removal and five responses to the RFQ for debris monitoring. An evaluation committee was convened and reviewed all the responses and developed a scoring and rating matrix. The cumulative ratings are included as the attachments in your agenda. It was determined that two of the debris removal companies, TFR Enterprises and Southern Disaster Recovery submitted non-responsive bids due to required elements not being included. It's recommended, it's the recommendation of staff that a primary and secondary contractor be selected for each activity. Additionally, it's recommended that each contract be for a three-year term with two one-year renewals. Each contract will also include a provision that any local government or other governmental agency within Craven County can utilize these contracts through a cooperative purchasing agreement and the contracts also dictate that the material will be ground and screened to a level that makes it more easily usable by Cravenwood Energy or other partners that may want to purchase or acquire the material. Helps with the final, helps with the final disposition of it. For debris removal and clearance, the committee recommends that Phillips and Jordan, Inc. be awarded the contractor as primary contractor and Crowder Gulf LLC be awarded the contractor as secondary contractor. For debris monitoring, the committee recommends that Tetra Tech, Inc. be awarded the contractor as primary contractor and Soundside Consulting be awarded the contractor as secondary contractor. Staff is here if there are any questions. So what we would like is one motion to approve for debris monitoring and clearance of primary and secondary. Then the second motion would be to approve a monitoring contract with a primary and secondary vendor.
Receive a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Sir.
You have in here that this contract's for a three-year term. Is that three year going to begin, is it for the remainder of 19, is it for 20 and on? What?
It'll be, well, your first, your first, your first three year will start from the day that we get it executed. So it'll be from August to August, you know, to that, that timeframe. And that's the amount, that's, that's the max you can go under the FEMA guidelines, is the three years and the two year renewals, the two one-year renewals.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Gene, let me ask you one question so the board is aware. Which one of these contractors is actually actual cost compared to what we've had this past, which one of these is it debris removal or the monitoring? Remember last year they, they messed. it debris removal or the monitoring? Remember, last year, they, they mess?
So we had a, the, the current contractor, or contractor we most recently had, was Phillips and Jordan. There was a, there was an error in their bidding. However, they honored the amount that they bid, that they quoted. Through this process, you know, we had other, we had another firm that made the exact same error, and we determined that it was an unresponsive at this point, and that was one of the ones that was deemed not responsive. So now, but the pricing is accurate, and it's been triple-checked.
I just want to make sure the board is aware they're going to see a difference in...
And the, the other thing is that when you get them, and when you get the, the five of them, and they're all pretty much within the same, I mean, they're in the same ballpark. We do an analysis, your, your range and your medium and your, your mean, it's whole nine yards, and they're all in the same ballpark. The pricing is one, one element of it. The main thing is, you got to realize who can do the best job for you.
Well, for this board, it's a big element, because what we paid last year and what we're going to pay this year is a big difference.
That's, that is true.
I think, Mr. Chair, you'll, you'll never pay that little again for hurricane, for hurricane removal.
For some of that quality, for some, something of the size of Hurricane Flanche, you'll never get that cheap again.
Mr. Chairman, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
So you, you said that the first contract is, is with somebody that we've assisted us this past year.
That's correct.
The second contract, is that the same?
The modern Tetra Tech is also the company that we've used most recently, too.
So we feel confident and good about the, um, those that we're going to award the contract to.
Yes, sir. And the idea, and I, I don't think we've ever had a secondary contract in place either. The idea would be if the first one, for whatever reason, can't perform, you pick up the phone and call number two, and they're ready.
Motion and second. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Moore?
Yes.
Chairman Light?
Yes. Okay. Entertain a motion for the second, for the debris monitoring services.
So moved.
Motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Right.
And just another thing, I don't know if I've mentioned this, we are paying a professional company to deliver these containers. We're spending almost a quarter million dollars to have it done. So it's going to be someone who, who does it professionally, who's going to give us the longitude and latitude every time they drop a container, it's going to have the serial number for everyone that's dropped, and it's going to be done in accordance with a list that the county has given us. So we've been, we're going to update Maylene every week at the end of, at the end of every day where we've been, where we've left a container, what the serial number was, and those kind of things. So it's, it'll be a very professional job of delivering containers.
Mr. Chair, wait, 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 wait.
Ladies and gentlemen?
I don't know if you need to answer it or Rusty, but, you know, we have, every once in a while, for some reason or another, we, they will forget or not pick up somebody's recyclables. I mean, and the citizen will call us, and then we call you. In a situation such as this, I mean, can we still go through the same format and contacting you and so forth?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If there, for whatever reason, if there's a missed card, to call our office, we'll relay the information. The way they've planned this out is, they're going to be in close proximity, even if it's the next week, they'll be in close proximity so they can send a truck back around to service that area.
And we actually routed everything to, to be close to the office, then to go by that route the next day. So every day, we'll be coming back through that week's service, and so it'll make it easier to pick up. Plus, the first, especially the first month, we're going to have extra trucks and drivers and things to go around and collect any kind of misses, because you can imagine, it's forty-five thousand or so, it's, it's not going to be perfect, even, we can plan till the cows come home, and it's not going to be a hundred percent perfect. But we will have a lot of backup, and, and we have routed it to, to make it easier too if somebody does miss and they call, we can come back by.
Will you begin picking up, just as you do now? I mean, they, they're out there pretty early, seven-thirty in the morning. I mean, do you have a start time?
Seven o'clock is when the contract says we can start this contract.
Commissioner Jason asked my question. GFL?
Our country, I mean, our company, our company last November merged with a company, Green for Life Environmental. They're out of Canada. We're still Waste Industries, but we're actually Waste Industries doing business as GFL. You'll start to see, the only change is going to be is everything's going to start, be turning green around here. Our corporations are still the same in the state of North Carolina. Our business model is still the same. The CEO of our company is, is on the board of the big company. Our COO of our company is the COO of the entire company now. We're just trying to do a little rebranding. We're going to get three brand-new trucks. You'll never miss them because they're as lime green as that cart right there.
That's what I was going to say.
And so, but we, we are buying new, new trucks for this contract, so everything will be brand-new truck-wise and cart-wise. There'll be automated trucks, of course, but we're looking forward to it, you know? We've, we've just been paying it a little bit, is what our boss likes to say.
Any other questions? Norma, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Gene reminded me, we are setting up a separate website for this program. Dennis, help me here. Cravenrecycles.com. It'll be, I mean, you can find a link on our website, CravenCounty.com, but we'll also have a str, a different URL for that. I don't believe it's ready to go yet. We're shooting for this, getting some things done this week, and then getting it live when the cans start showing up. So we'll send you that link in an email too. Thank you.
All right, sir, thank you. All right, moving on. Finance, Greg Warren, Convention Center financing agreement.
Good morning, Commissioners. Provided in your agendas are several documents related to the financing of the improvements that will be completed as part of the Convention Center Recovery Project. The first attachment is the financing schedule that outlines the key dates and tasks for this borrowing and concludes what anticipated closing date of September twelfth, 2019. The Board has completed the first action of this process by holding the public hearing. The next step in this process is to adopt the two resolutions that are included in your agendas. They are the preliminary approving resolution and a reimbursement resolution. The preliminary resolution just pretty much makes these certain findings and determinations regarding the financing of the project. It also authorizes the filing of the application with the LGC or local government commission and further request that the LGC approve the application. Another aspect of this preliminary resolution that's not typical to be included is a, a request to, an authorization to, for the LGC to approve a rate modification on the, the general obligation refunding bonds that were approved back in March of 2019. This bond was refunded at eight million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand as bank-qualified debt, which makes the bond a little bit more attractive to the banks and provides the county with a slightly lower interest rate. The drawback to this selection is that the county can only issue up to ten million dollars of tax-exempt debt within the same calendar year. At the time of the refunding, Commissioners had not been presented with the final plans for the Convention Center, so the final cost and the scope of the project at that time was unknown. If the county moved forward without requesting the rate modification, the majority of the debt issued for the Convention Center improvements would be issued as taxable debt, which would significantly increase the borrowing costs to the county over the life of the loan. For comparative purposes, the value of the bank-qualified status on the 2019 refunding equates to approximately eighty-three hundred dollars in a reduction of that savings that was realized over the repayment period. The value of not issuing the Convention Center debt as tax-exempt on the ten million dollars equates to approximately six hundred thousand of borrowing costs over the life of the loan. Due to those significantly higher borrowing costs associated with the taxable debt is recommended that we move forward with the, including this request in the resolution. The second resolution, the reimbursement, is simply just to allow the county to repay itself back with any upfront funds that are spent towards the project.
Okay. Do you want these separate, or can we combine them as one res, a one motion?
I think it would be best or cleaner to do it separate.
Separate, okay. Entertainer, motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Sir?
I want to make sure I understand what you're trying to say here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you are putting in this resolution about that you're, you're going for tax-exempt debt, requesting a rate modification.
Yes, sir.
So we will not be charged because of putting in the request for rate modification, you will not be charged the additional cost of borrowing.
Correct. By making this request, it removes the bank-qualified status on that refunding. We've already kind of negotiated this with PNC, which was the bank that we did the refunding with.
Okay.
You get the cost and get the approval from them. That is, basically, that has kind of been approved.
By just having that clause in there, requesting the rate modification, that will exempt us from that six hundred thousand.
Yes, that kind of removes that ten million dollar threshold.
Okay.
Of tax-exempt debt, that limit, so therefore, we can continue on issuing any additional debt.
So if we go over ten million, the cost of it or anything, or up to ten million, I mean, there's nothing to change that. We're, we're set.
Yes, sir. This is simply just to remove the bank-qualified status off of the 2019 refunding.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Managers, I got one question. Can he share the finances with us so the Board is aware of what he's done? Or is that something that can be discussed?
I was going to go after the, and if you want me to do that now, I can kind of go through kind of the, what we received back, because the bank bids were due on Friday, and then that information wasn't available.
I'll wait there. All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
She's up there.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes.
So at the next board meeting, I'll come back with the final resolution that will have all the final banking numbers in there. That will be the last action that the Board will be required to do on this matter. Friday, if you look at the schedule, those are when the bank RFPs were due back. I think we were extremely pleased with the number and competitiveness of the responses we received back. We could not have timed it, timed it any better than we did, and the market conditions were extremely favorable for us at that time. The banks were asked to bid on two different repayment terms. We put the RFP out there at twelve-and-a-half-year term and a fourteen-and-a-half-year. The half-year is only because we'll be making an interest payment in the current fiscal year with the principal and interest due next year. Bids were compared and assessed, you know, based on their various features, including the rate, prepayment conditions, and under fees by a committee consisting of the bond attorney, a financial advisor, the assistant county manager, and myself. The bank that responded with the most competitive rate and repayment terms that met all the county's requirements was Zion's Bank. Their proposal included a rate of two-point-two percent on the fourteen-and-a-half-year term note. The first annual debt service under this proposal was nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, which decreases from there each year after. This was also very close to the targeted repayment amount that we identified during the work session based on the analysis of the occupancy tax collections.
And the Board, if you keep in mind, when they came forward to us, we were looking at three to three-and-a-half percent on that, on a ten-year loan. So to get two-point-two at fourteen-and-a-half, it keeps us well in line with what we're closing out with on the other one.
We, you know, during those work sessions, we also, we're looking at nine-and-a-half million at this point, based on the rates and the terms that the banks are willing to go. I would recommend we go for the, for the full ten million that we've put in the resolution.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the second resolution.
Some move.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Booker?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Mark?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes.
Thank you.
Greg, as I told you earlier, thank you for everything you've done on this. This is, this is great news for us.
You're welcome. Good job. You saved me.
Yeah. Okay, next on the list, Human Services, Amber Parker.
Good morning, Chairman. Board, included in your packets is a proposed Craven County twenty-twenty holiday schedule. This holiday schedule grants eleven holidays, and it includes two days for Christmas and no floating holidays. This schedule is basically the same as the state of North Carolina's twenty-twenty holiday schedule, with the exception that the state of North Carolina grants three days for Christmas, and this schedule grants two for Craven County.
Receive a motion?
Some move.
Motion, motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Amber.
Yes, quit, wasn't it?
Okay, appointments coming up, pending, we have... Adult care, nursing home, New Bern planning, that's ETJ, still looking for that. Trillium, we're still looking for that one. Did we get a, did we get that one from Trillium, man, an application? Okay. Craven Community College Trust Board is on hold, will hold that one. Craven County, I'm still working on that one, and we still got, who's the other seat that's vacant other than myself?
Mr. Johnny, I think.
Mr. Johnny? He'd work on that, Mr. Johnny? Okay. Okay, and then upcoming in September is Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Tracy Monk on that. Next on the list is County Attorney's Report.
I have no report from county attorney.
Thank you. I know that's two weeks in a row. County Managers' Report.
Mr. Chair, I covered ninety-five percent of what I wanted to say earlier, but I will mention on our Facebook page and website, there are information about the carts meetings, public interactions we're having, again, I believe it's this week, against tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
So just to ask the Board, familiarize yourself with those. We'd love to have you if you can attend the ones in your district, or any ones for that matter.
Okay. Commissioners' Report, Commissioner Booker.
I have nothing to report.
Mr. Jones?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McCabe?
Yes, I just have one thing here. I attend the, the credit con back on Friday, on the eighth of last week, and they unveiled the new bear they got from the bank there. And the attendance was, the New Bern Police Department, they was there, and all the people from the bank, and out there, so they had a gift. You put your card into the, the basket, you get a gift, and I got a call. Two days later, a cave you won. I never heard it's played, it's called the week clothing, private label. You heard that? The people in the old days, where them people come from, the dentin' minutes?
I couldn't tell you. You must put glue on your cards.
Anyway, I won, so I'm gonna go by there and see what can I get. So that's all, just want to tell you that.
Commissioner Sampson?
Yes. I just want to talk about, one important thing to me is that we need, we need somewhere for people to go that's walking the street. I had a problem yesterday. My wife church, she go through, they got, they got the mugs, so they're Trinity Church, letting them have whole service there at eight o'clock in the morning. We was at the place, so here, a lady come in, didn't have anywhere to go. And so we had to try to fix up some kind of way. In fact, then you had a preacher service for trying. One came in, one's who had to go to, come in, went pray after, had an alcoholic problem. So we wasn't even able to have the preacher service by trying to see what we could do about them. And one of them, that had, essentially received money for some people to stay in a hotel for two nights, but she come there, tried to get some money, see if we could, we give her money enough to stay in a hotel. And this is a big problem on this small church. Right now, getting involved to work, to work on the church, trying to help get the church back in session. And then my wife, she had to catch a ride, and wife, wife, looked like she could pick up. Everybody, they ain't got nobody to pick up. And we spent a half a day riding, riding her around. Good thing I was glad that young guy who works with us all, quite often, tried to help him. He, he took her around, took him around, tried to find someplace. So finally, we had to take her to the jail, not the jail, but out here to the police station. And so I had to drop her off there, but I guarantee he spent about three or four extra hours trying to, trying to give us where I had to go. She, because we didn't have the money to give her for a room. And I think it would be outstanding if the county and the city could come together and have a place that people could go. And, and we, you know, it's still a lot of people out of their home since the storm. In fact, I'm one of the ones that's not in my home now, but the Lord have blessed me, so I was able to get some help. But we got some people walking the street year-round, not only when it's a storm, we got people walking the street year-round, nowhere to go. It seem like we haven't awakened yet to try to get a place that we could set up. The people didn't have, have anybody to go but to jail. Can't, you got to have a conviction, or you got to create a crime to go to jail. You don't want to do that, because we got enough people in there now. So I, I hope we could sit down and try to study this situation, because it seem like we as a community and a county, and a city, we, we seem like this is something that is not important, but I feel like, I feel like it's very important, because when a person is out, out in the streets, nowhere to go, they might do anything. They might do anything to me or you either one. So I, I just want to see if we get some kind of organization or some committee to work on, or with the city. I had talked to the city also, but they seem, seem like they just don't have no issue. And so do we seem like we don't have no issue. But I, I'm concerned, because you got to be concerned for people who can't help themselves. Even though we have people coming in town, now, we say we got the soup kitchen, but we know the soup kitchen don't have a few rooms out there. And then, and then they're for veterans too, and veteran is the first problem, which is understandable. But that's not, this county, this county have fifty, at least fifty thousand citizens over this county. The city have about twenty-five thousand citizens. And then we got people coming in from different states that we got to be considerate of finding them a place. So it's a, it, it is a giant obligation to try to attend to helping people who don't have anywhere to go. I, I've been around living all my life, and people been sleeping on the bridges, sleeping in old cars. Some, some, some of it their own fault.
They're still under the bridge.
But, but we can't necessarily, it's everybody the same way. But we even have to be concerned about those people who is their own fault, because in the streets, they, they could attack some citizen who is an upstanding citizen, who pays the taxes, who do everything right. So I, I'm just asking this board to think about contacting the city, see if we work together to set up a place that people don't have no place to go, or have a place that they can go to. I know the reentry council, they, they welcome up the young people, and young people who's out there wanting to do good and, and get some training and get a job, that, that's a great thing. And get them off the street, but we still got people still on the street, so I just want you to think about it. We could come together and, and, even if we just start out small and grow, because this, this having, this is not a problem that just happened, this is a problem been here ever since I can remember. And I think it need some study, and I, I believe we have people that is willing to try to, I know we got enough churches out here trying to help people to get off the streets. I think together, I think this can be done. But I know it is taxing me pretty hard, because my wife thinks she can do everything. I tell her all the time, you just can't do everything. Then that gonna pull me into it. And I, I feel like it's something that can be done and needs to be done. And we got a lot of Christians around here, say they follow Jesus Christ, and Jesus Christ wouldn't let people stay on the street, or he would take time to go talk to those people who didn't have any help and try to get, and would get them some help. That's all I have.
Next, Chair?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended a Dick's Crisis Intervention Center last week, and pretty much what we did was elect offices, decided on a schedule of a quarterly meeting. However, we are going to meet in September once more, monthly, but we'll be meeting quarterly, and I'll have further reports at that time.
Anything else, sir?
That's it.
I have nothing, so we'll move on. We'll go into closed session. Board will request to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dash eleven, A three, attorney-client privilege. Entertain a motion?
Some move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to recess for five minutes.
Make a motion, go ahead.
Motion and a second, go out of closed session. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're out of closed session. I'll entertain a motion to instruct staff to move forward with the attorneys on the process for the Carolina Pines issue.
Some move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay. I have one thing, just to pass on, I didn't pass on. This afternoon, sometime hopefully, myself, Stanley, maybe the manager, he's busy. sometime hopefully, myself, Stanley, maybe the manager, he's busy, Amber, and a few others. Walmart in Havelock is donating 117 chainsaws to the fire departments for Craven County, and we will collect those this afternoon.
Yep.
And turn them over to the association, and they will be responsible for making distribution.
What time you been in there?
I don't know. I'm still setting it up with Amber.
So far, I have one meeting, elected who's responded, and they're willing to go, and they're standing by for a time.
Okay. So, just let you know on that, to get them recognition there. That's good.
Chair, I caught you here. Are we going to update on the AMI service, get your file?
Let's get together with Jack after that and see where we've put anything out yet.
We have not.
Have not.
No. Because Santa Kite got an email last week about this.
It's been done for a month.
Yeah, a month.
It's going to be, it'll be next spring before you get it up, I mean, before you have anything to look at.
Well, we didn't tell them that, because they ran the hell out of me about this.
Well, I told them that.
But he not listen. He called Santa Kite, he think I got money.
Yeah, we don't have money. Okay, anything else?
No, listen.
Entertain a motion?
There, two? Yes.
Motion to adjourn, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.